Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, June 3, 7:01 PM, and we're in regular session tonight. With our first item of business being to establish a quorum, all members of council are present. The next item of business is communications. City council has received two communications, one of which is from State Senator Frank Hoagland, and he writes back in response to an earlier resolution that city council members passed urging the fuel tax to be raised. And he did want to acknowledge receipt of that and talked about the additional monies, an additional $313 million for municipalities and $270 million for counties and $168 million additional monies for townships because of that fuel tax increase. We also then have a notice to the legislative authority from the state Ohio Division of Liquor Control, which is part of the Department of Commerce. And this is for an announcement that Pete's BP on 542 Richland Avenue is now going to be titled, it's been retitled to Pete's BP LLC. There are two new owners, Brian Wharton and Dan Fregosi. And this will be for a C1, C2, and D6 liquor license at this establishment. The C1 is beer only in sealed containers. C2 is wine and mixed beverages in sealed containers. And the D6 is Sunday sales from 10:00 AM to midnight. So it's basically a changing of ownership at that particular business. Do council members have other communications? Councilmember Crowe?
I'd like to announce that this Wednesday at 6:30 in the downstairs conference room will be the June meeting of the Environment and Sustainability Commission, and I welcome all attendance. Thank you.
Other announcements? Yes, councilmember Kotsas.
President Nisley, thank you. New month, so the next Athens City School District, the board meeting will be happening on June 27, and that is a Thursday, 6:30 PM, and that is at the Athens High School auditorium.
Okay, thank you. Any other communications from council members? Communications from other elected officials, Law Director's Office? Any communications or reports? Okay. Auditorium head?
No.
Okay. Mayor Patterson?
President Nisley, I have a couple items I'd like to share. One that I received from Jesse Schmetzer, the Transportation, the Athens County Mobility Manager, and that was that the HAPCAP Mobility Manager will be hosting a series of open forums or town hall meetings, or whatever you want to call them, to talk about the Athens County Transportation Sales Tax. The ones, there's two of them here in Athens. The first one, well, the first one will be at 10:00 AM at the Athens Public Library on the 17th of June. There will be a second one that same day at 5:30, also at Athens Public Library, to open that up for conversation. And some of this has to do with the expanded or extended Route 7, which is the bus line that will go from Albany through Athens to Nelsonville on an hourly schedule. So I wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that. It's open to the public, obviously. The second is that I've received several letters from concerned parents about the reduction in playgrounds/green space at West Elementary and the fact that the student body at West Elementary will also increase in size. I was including those emails along with the school board members as well as the superintendent for the Athens City School District.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. We now have ordinances, and we'll be reading them. The ones that are third reading, that is the final reading. And so there is usually a background explanation, opportunity for any other comments or questions, and then a vote taken on those ordinances. The ordinances for second reading, we usually read the title, and if we do have some comments or questions, we do have pause for a moment for that, but not a full discussion. And then ordinances for first reading, we give the background information and some introduction to that, and also have an opportunity for questions and comments then as well. So that's the order we'll be proceeding in tonight. Ordinances for third reading then. 4619 is an ordinance authorizing unneeded or obsolete municipal personnel property to be sold by internet, personal property to be sold by internet auction. And this is introduced by councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. At this moment, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 4619.
Second.
Thank you. Quite simply, as acknowledged in Section 1, this ordinance would authorize the City Service Safety Director to contract with a representative to conduct internet auctions for the selling of unneeded or obsolete municipal property. It would require the bidder to pay all fees, taxes, and charges. And then lastly, auction items will be advertised for no less than 10 days, including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second. Are there any other comments or questions from administration, staff, council members, or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Ordinance 4719 is an ordinance declaring vehicles no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and this is introduced by councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. At this moment, I would also like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 4719.
Second.
Thank you. As many of you may recall, at committee meeting, we, and at first reading, we discussed the need to release some of these vehicles that are no longer needed, and they include a litany of different powered devices, anywhere from 1972 Gravely mower to 2014 Ford Focus. Included in the list, we have Ford trucks, a couple other Gravely mowers, Massey Ferguson mower, 2004 Suzuki 4x4, Chevy Aveo, 2012, 2012 Kubota mowers, another Ford F-150 and a Ford 350. And again, many of these are either in disrepair or have experienced a dutiful long life on our streets and are now ready to be let go. The Ford F-350 has over 108,000 miles on it. A Ford F-150 has 142,000 miles. Ford Focus had a transmission recall, so again, they've served their purpose. Thank you.
So we have a motion and second, and I believe we have a comment from Mayor Patterson.
Just to share the mileage that you just indicated for those two trucks, the F-150 and the F-350, those are by and large in-city, city miles, not highway miles. And then you also mentioned the Ford Focus 2014. Just so people know, that vehicle does have a transmission recall. We weren't going to continue utilizing our city fleet.
Okay, thank you. And a comment from councilmember Reisner.
Does the city have a website that describes these vehicles, has a photo or anything that the potential buyer might?
I don't believe we do.
I just wondered.
We can look into having something like that put on.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, President Nisley.
I will acknowledge that historically too, as noted in Section 2, the City Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to dispose of said items by donation to other governmental agencies or nonprofit 501(c)(3), as well as auction, sealed bid, trade-in, or sell for scraps. So I know we've also in the past donated items to other cities that are in need or other municipalities.
Police cruiser.
Correct.
Councilmember Fall, thank you.
I'm assuming that the one that has the recall will be completely taken out of commission and not donated. I assume that that's already happened.
Okay, good point. Thank you for all the comments. Any other comments or questions? Okay. We have a motion and second, and now we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Ordinance 4819 is an ordinance closing a portion of Union Street on Sunday, August 25, 2019, for Ohio University's Involvement Fair. Introduced by councilmember Kotsas.
President Nisley, thank you. At this moment, I would like to make a motion to adopt 04819.
Second.
And just a little background on this. This is a closure, a street closure of Union Street between Court Street and College Street, and this is Sunday, August 25. The reason for this, this is the, this is the only time that the Ohio University freshman class is completely together, and they come up and visit tables for the university's Involvement Fair. So basically recruiting people to look at extracurricular activities during their four years, or five or six years here at our university. So it's a, the event has been going on for quite some time. They've decided they needed a little bit more space. I would also want to mention that the vending spaces will remain open and accessible during that time, that closure time on Sunday, the 25th.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approving ordinance 4819. Any other comments or questions from council members, administration, audience? Councilmember McGee?
I would just like to add, I think this is a very good idea. It's closing off a part of a street without impacting Court Street, and I just think that if it works well, and it certainly should, I would hope that future opportunities when people come before city council and ask for closures of streets, that they might consider this section rather than imposing a possible detriment on some of the merchants. So thank you, and I approve this wholeheartedly.
Okay. All right. I think we'll move forward with a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have a series of ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 4919 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, known as NOPEC, in order to accept NOPEC Energized Community or NEC grants. This is introduced by all members of council. Ordinance 5019 is an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance introduced by councilmember Reisner.
Madam President, I'd like to ask, I believe you've requested from the administration a couple of times an itemized list for the $18,000 to Athens City Enhancement Fund 250, transaction code 300. There's several items there, but there's nothing broken down of how that money is to be spent. Have you received anything?
Other than, councilmember Reisner, I don't have the full breakdown on where all the, what is going to be allocated to each one of the items that falls under that, in particular for the Athens Enhancement Fund, the $18,000. I do know that American Bloom, that there was, I believe, $3,000 that was going towards that, but I can get you a full breakdown, have not yet received that from the Deputy Service Safety Director.
I think in that case, I'd like to make a motion that we table until we get the list. Just keep procedure moving.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Much like the transportation one earlier, that would help us to have that in time for us to pass it.
If we get the list, we can amend the ordinance and include it, and then, if necessary, suspend.
Okay. Okay, the motion and second to table this ordinance 5019. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and that particular ordinance has been tabled. Ordinance 5119 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 9, General Regulations, Chapter 9.04, Outdoor Fires, Section 9.04.01, Outdoor Fires Without Permit, Unlawful. And Chapter 9.05, Fire Control, Petroleum Liquids, Section 9.05.01, Definitions. This is introduced by councilmember Fall. Ordinance 5219 is an ordinance amending ordinance 1919 to correct the parcel ID numbers, granting an enhanced access easement to allow utilities to property contiguous to Hope Drive, and this is introduced by councilmember Fall. Ordinance 5319 is an ordinance amending Title 17, Municipal Income Tax, Chapter 17.01 in general, Section 17.01.18, Local Board of Review, Appeal to Local Board of Tax Review, introduced by councilmember Fall. And we now move forward to several ordinances for first reading, quite a few of them having to do with closures for special events this summer and some other items. Ordinance 5419 is an ordinance authorizing fiber optic network construction to traffic signals on East State Street. This is project number 328, and authorizing an inter-fund transfer, introduced by councilmember Kotsas.
President Nisley, thank you. And Safety Service Safety Director Andy Stone was here last week to talk about this. This is a request for appropriation of $135,000 to install fiber and basically sync up our streetlights on, not streetlights, I'm sorry, our traffic signals on East State Street. And so this would be the, I believe, the first time that we're installing fiber within our public right-of-way. And so it's, that is the request that is before us tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions at this point? All right. We'll move on to ordinance 5519. That's an ordinance authorizing design engineering services for the West Union Street Improvements Project Number 322, introduced by councilmember Kotsas.
President Nisley, thank you. And using my history background, looking backwards at our, at our street upgrades, developments, basically, we have four major streets that come, you know, into the center of the city, and this one, West Union, is the last of the four that we're looking to upgrade. And so Richland Avenue, State Street, we're in the middle of Stimson right now. West Union is the final, so this is for engineering and design. Request is $615,000, being appropriated to Street Fund 220, TC 500.
Okay, thank you. And yes, a comment from councilmember Reisner.
There's a question, maybe you know the answer or not. As part of this design, is there any thought about establishing a connection between West Union and West State?
I know that that's been talked about, but I don't know if that is included in the design, engineering at this point. I mean, that's, administration, do you have any?
It's been discussed, but I agree with councilmember Kotsas that it's not in this design.
Okay. Part of this process is to figure out what the best routes are at that, you know, at that juncture. So we've identified issues, but what's the best route? We don't know yet.
We, I can tell you that last week, the tail end of last week, we met with the Director of the Governor's Office of Appleache, John Carey, and had a lengthy conversation about the possibility of accessing A R C, Access Road Funding, but it was just a visit to take a look at the possibility of a connector between West Union and West State Street. There's no design.
Okay.
Actually, then I have a question then. If that was the route being thought about, then it's not even part of this project? Would that be something that would be rolled into this project as time went on if additional funds were coming available?
Timing-wise, it doesn't line up exactly with this particular funding. We would probably be looking at a 2022 project to be able to do that, but it's something that, like I said, is certainly being looked at.
Okay.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Yes. Beth Clodfelter, yes, you can come up. Give your name, address, and if you represent a group.
Hello, my name is Beth Clodfelter. I live at 35 South Shannon Avenue. And as I prepare to run for city council, I've been attending West Side Neighborhood meetings, and they are really concerned about this access road thing. So I hope if you are considering putting in an access road, I hope you will talk to the people in the West Side Neighborhood, because they're kind of worried about that. They've talked about it in at least three meetings.
Okay, thanks for the comments.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Ordinance 5619 is an ordinance authorizing a slip repair on University Estates Boulevard and declaring an emergency, introduced by councilmember Kotsas.
President Nisley, thank you. And I would, actually, I'm going to read the two whereas for this ordinance. Whereas the water line in this area has broken twice from slippage, and whereas the slip repair needs immediate detention to protect the water line and roadway of University Estates Boulevard, the administration is requesting an appropriating, well, taking an unappropriated balance and applying it to Street Fund 220, TC 500. This is to the amount of $48,000. And we can just go through normal reads? I mean, it sounds like this is a little bit more of a situation. I mean, we can let it go for...
The Director of Engineering and Public Works, Bob Hattie, didn't indicate to me that this has to...
Okay, all right.
At this point, but all it takes is one or two more significant deluges, and the city of Athens, that story could change.
Okay. Check back with us, we'll be here.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on that one? 5619. Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 5719. This is an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for residential and franchise area refuse and recycling collection services, and is introduced by all members of council. And just a little bit of background information before we open it up for any discussion or comments or questions. This topic was introduced at committee level last week, and we actually, as with some of our other committee meetings, we, our rules of council say we don't usually have discussion at committee meetings, other than by the particular members of the committee that are serving on it. But given the topic, and there was so much concern, we did open that up for comments last week, kind of an exception to the situation. And at that time, the Service Safety Director, Andy Stone, also presented the information that he felt that council, he was reporting from the city's perspective that they didn't believe that they had received acceptable bids for a number of circumstances. And so that is where the background from which this ordinance then presents itself to council for consideration, that we would be, by approving this ordinance after three readings, then extending the contract, that is with A H R C, beginning July 1, 2019, and extending that for a year, and then beginning the discussions for bidding, the bidding process to begin after that. So tonight, we had many good comments, and I'm glad to see that some of the people who attended last week are here tonight as well, and we appreciate your interest and concern and the comments, the useful comments we received. Tonight, we're going to be restricting the questions and comments to the ordinance itself, so not to the general topic of the bidding process. That will come up at future committee, council, council committee discussions. In part, I know that we're planning to make sure that those council committee discussions happen as soon as possible, but we also want to make sure that we have the full complement from the Law Director's Office to help us in the participation and discussion, or, you know, the considerations on this, and our law director is away right now. So I will open it up for any comments or questions from council members to begin with, or city administration. Councilmember McGee?
Thank you. I was just looking at the ordinance and noticed the price for the one year will be $1,420,000. And I just wondered how much of an increase is this raise at this point in time?
I believe it was $400,000 from the information taken last week. Yes, councilmember Reisner?
I was going to say, I think, I believe it'd be about $100,000 increase from the last contract.
Councilmember, yeah, I can get that information for you. I don't have it in my fingertips. Sorry, it's a moment. I'd like to get you.
I just think it's something that the public is entitled to know, how much it is going up, and that doesn't mean I'm against it by any means, I just think that we should have that knowledge. Thank you.
Other, yes, councilmember Fall, while I'm looking through my papers to see if I can get the math for you.
One thing was that composting, whether composting is included or not, is another issue. I think that the, I'd like to see going forward, these sort of processes not wait until one month before the due, you know, drop dead date. I think that's a really important thing for us to be able to take our time and read the information and such. Also, I think that this is a really good point in time to start talking about reviewing certain processes that the city does, such as contracting and those sort of things, to make sure that those principles are embedded in all the processes, from contracting to procurement, to everything else in the city. It follows our sustainability guidelines and our, you know, climate crisis guidelines. So going forward, with the conversation that President Nisley was talking about, I think that's really important to put on the table.
And our clerk of counsel did find the earlier ordinance and the last ordinance in June of 18, the amount for the trash was $1,342,002.06, and it's now at $1,420,000 even.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is that including the composting? That's including the composting. Wasn't the bid including the composting pilot?
Well, my understanding is the composting pilot is still a pilot.
And that had separate funds appropriated for that.
The council would have to make, take action to move forward with a composting option program, so I don't think that that is.
Yes, councilmember Reisner?
If this ordinance is approved, does the administration plan to come back to council with an idea of what the rate increases would have to be to cover the cost?
Well...
Because I don't see how we can continue tapping our reserve fund and keeping the rates as they have been without making an adjustment somewhere.
That was in the memo that the Service Safety Director had read to council last Tuesday evening.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other comments or questions from the audience? Yes, Judy.
Judy Roman, Northwood Drive. So this means we're going to have a raise in our trash?
Yes.
Pickup?
Yep. Luckily.
How much? Do you have any idea?
We don't at this point in time.
You can't take any other money and move it around then, huh? Like, the money that you're going to use the $1 million for that bridge, or whatever you're doing for Richland?
No, the garbage fund, which is a charity fund.
You know what? I just want to say that. You spend an awful lot of money.
Thanks for the comments. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Yes, councilmember McGee?
One comment I would like to make, just to clarify, my calculation from the math is that this is a 78,000 increase, not a $100,000 increase, so I think that's important.
I stand corrected, thank you.
Okay, I just think it's important. It's not as bad a bullet as we might have thought, so...
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, Mr. Underwood.
Just one thing.
Sure, come on up and...
Good evening. Bruce Underwood, Director at Athens Hawk Recycling. I don't know if I stated my address correctly last time, but it's Robert Road in Hocken County, just outside of Logan. Mayor Patterson, thanks for clarifying that the compost contract is separate, as you do remember. So that's something, you know, when we're talking about these prices, to make sure we're putting everything in the same category. So, you know, we're currently charging the city 1.342 million is the price of the extension right now. And to compare that with what the new bid price that we had put in for this last bid through this round was about five or six percent higher than that, whatever those dollars and cents come up to. So just trying to keep that in the comparison, the difference. So not that much of an increase from that year over, but that, again, that does not include the compost. We certainly hopefully hope that that goes forward, even in its pilot stage or as a full-blown city service. I'm not certain for, something for the council and administration to consider. But I guess I wanted, the other thing with that is too, and I know this is, you said, limited to the exact bid, not to the bid, but for this ordinance in particular, but I guess I do have a question. It sounds like you received the communication about the licensure, so I feel like that affects the ongoing operations aside from this bid as well, just to try to figure out what that licensure mean. We had some disagreement with what Mr. Stone asserted last time with who isn't licensed in the city of Athens to haul solid waste. So that's something of a concern to us to move forward, make sure we clarify those issues, you know, so everyone is on the same page again.
Sure. Appreciate the comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to ordinance 5819. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for Issue One funds to execute contracts as required, introduced by Councilmember McGee.
This is, what it says basically, the, an ordinance that would authorize the mayor to enter into some contracts to inquire about state funding, and those funds would be used in the streets of Athens in particular, it would be for the Stimson Avenue improvement projects.
Projects. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Ordinance 5919 is an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance and introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Allow me to read the pertinent sections of the 5919. Section 1, the 2019 appropriation ordinance, 140-18, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $4,250 to General Fund Fire 101.208, transaction code 300, and $28,961 to General Fund Fire 101.208, transaction code 500, for a state grant award used to purchase new radio equipment, and $114,000 to General Fund Other Administration 101.120, transaction code 300, for a refund check received from the Bureau of Workman's Compensation and increase in the total appropriations by said amount.
Okay. Thank you. Comments or questions? All right. Ordinance 6019 is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to enter into a merchant agreement with Government Payment Services, known as GPS, Inc., to allow the Income Tax Department to accept credit card payments. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Allow me to read the pertinent section. The auditor is hereby authorized to enter into a merchant agreement with Government Payment Service, GPS, Incorporated, to allow the Income Tax Department to accept credit card payments, a copy of which is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. I said, the auditor in the audience, does she have any points to make on this that we don't already know or have forgotten?
Well, we did have a good discussion last week, I thought, and afterwards. I sent some additional information out to council members and the administration as it came in. I haven't received any questions from anyone back, and that's fine. That can still happen. I think we are waiting for one other bit of information from them, but we feel good, really good about going with this company and the ability to take these payments and tax. People ask about it all the time, which I'm sure they've said that in utilities and all kinds of departments around the city. So I hope we can move forward with this, but if you do have questions, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance 6119 is an ordinance authorizing the promotion of a fire lieutenant to a fire captain in accordance with the Non-Union Personnel Fringe Benefits Package, Ordinance 44318, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, the ordinance reads exactly as it is. We are promoting one of our lieutenants in the fire department up to the rank of captain, which means they're moving from a union to the, to a non-union fringe benefit package. Allow me to read the pertinent section here. In accordance with the Non-Union Personnel Fringe Benefit Package, Ordinance 143-18, Section 20A1, Promotion, Lateral Transfer, and Demotion of New Hires and Current Employees, Athens City Council does hereby authorize the promotion of a fire lieutenant to the position of fire captain at a pay rate of $32.54 that does not exceed the midpoint of the pay grade. The promotion to captain will not decrease the employee's current rate of vacation accumulation.
And as I understand, we may be then suspending on a second reading so that administration can move forward with filling the, beginning to fill the lieutenant position.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Ordinance 6219 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 43, Wireless Telecommunications Facilities, Chapter 43.07A, Special Use Permit Application and Other Requirements, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. We've talked about this a couple committees ago. Basically, this is a recommendation from the Planning Commission that follows our other special use permits, like in our right-of-way. We changed it to where the council legislative body had, per se, about a permit, and updates to that permit of the right-of-way use would be done administratively. This is for telecommunication facilities where major modifications or new installments would go through the legislative process, and any minor modifications or co, what do they do, co-locating, would go through an administrative process, and it could be moved to the Code Enforcement Office as opposed to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember Reisner.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this has nothing to do with this trend towards these microcells that they put on public telephone poles and things like that?
No.
Okay. Separate thing?
Yes.
This is our large towers up there in our G-Shed.
Okay.
Where we get, often have the telecommunications companies come out and ask for these minor modifications that they're doing, third-placing, while the existing antennas with upgraded electronics in there in Levens, they're swapping them out.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Ordinance 6319 is an ordinance closing a portion of West State Street. Somebody's microphone is. Hopefully, it's not mine. Anyway, we're going to close a portion of West State Street between Court and Congress on Saturday, July 13, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and closing a portion of Court Street between Washington and Carpenter and State Street between Congress and College on Saturday, July 20, 2019, from 6:00 a.m. to midnight for Ohio Brew Week, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. I'd also like to thank whoever was able to combine both of these street closures into one ordinance, so I didn't have to read another one. This is both for Brew Week, its first and last call. So Saturday, July 13 is that closure of Court Street between Washington and Carpenter and State Street between Congress and College, and then last call, Saturday, July 20. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Let me back up. Actually, can I, Brandon, can I lean on you a little bit to just go through the street closures? I mean, because I can fumble through this, but you know it so much better than I do. Thank you so much.
Brandon Thompson, Ohio Brew Week. So first call, we are closing, excuse me, State Street between Court and Congress, and like I mentioned last week, Court Street will be open, so the alley between Tony's and Sue Flocke's will still be open, so the business can basically access that and the residents as well. Then for last call, we're open to do from Washington to Carpenter, and then also we'll be closing State Street between Congress and then College Street. So you'll be able to turn around through Dominus. That's the plan that we've done in the years past.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Ordinance 6419 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise in the Uptown Area on Saturday, July 13 and Saturday, July 20 for Ohio Brew Week, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. This is just the, one of the parallel ordinances that we have to run. We have an event in our uptown area, and this is, once again, two events, both of them for Ohio Brew Week, Saturday, July 13 and Saturday, July 20, and this is suspending our vending, vending ordinance. It's in place usually.
The final one is 6519, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, Vending Peddling and Soliciting to Allow Vending in a Designated Area on Saturday, July 13 and Saturday, July 20, 2019, during the Ohio Brew Week event.
President Nisley, thank you. And I guess I misspoke. The last one, 06419, is the noise ordinance. This is the vending ordinance for, also for the two events that are those Saturdays for Ohio Brew Week, the 13th and the 20th of July.
Okay. And I'll ask, but I'll assume no more questions or comments since there weren't any on the first ordinance for this. Ordinance 6619 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between State and Carpenter on Saturday, August 10, from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, August 11, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. And, you know, upfront, I want to, I want to say that I do not want to single out any events, but I will say that at this point, the process that has happened with Boogie on the Bricks, because we got a presentation last week, and this was a, this was a new date, this date, usually Boogie on the Bricks happens in June. And, you know, my position on Transportation Committee is to, is to watch all of these street closures come through and have the communication. And after that presentation, we did, we did receive some comments, and I also learned that the process, because there is a process, you, you know, in order to put on a community event, you have to work with the community. So that is engaging with the business owners uptown, also working with the, with the other events that are, that are happening around that. And historically, we've had events that have happened around this time. This request has basically put us in a position where we have a six-week period in the summer of this city, where we have five different street closures on five of those six weekends. And so it's a, it's a challenge, and it's something that, that people were uncomfortable with. I was already uncomfortable, uncomfortable with it before, before it came before me, so I was able to pull together a meeting with the promoter last Thursday morning with administration, and we sat down and we thought we had a, had a compromise. And that compromise was to go to one block between Court Street, between Carpenter and State Street, so that we weren't shutting down any intersections, and we felt like we could, we could kind of squeak through what was going to be a busy and challenging time with all of these street closures. Now, don't, you know, I really do appreciate the street closures. I really enjoy them. I think it's something that, you know, you take a city service, you know, a public right-of-way, and you change it for a short period of time and allow people to enjoy it, and people get out and really have a, you know, have, have a different experience in an area where, you know, it's usually moving vehicular traffic. But we're moving vehicular traffic in these areas, and I think that we have to be mindful of that and understand that at some point, we, we're going to have a straw that breaks the camel's back. And that's, that's where I kind of feel like we are, we are at with this one. And I could continue to go on, but I mean, I think I'll just open it up.
Why don't we open it up for any comments or discussion or questions? Councilmember Fall.
I agree with that. We need maybe, we've talked before, maybe having a drop-dead date for the, all the various uptown projects and programs that want to go on, and that they work together so that they can work it out between all of them, and maybe with Paige over in the tourism and city administration, and come forward with the business community with a whole, like, summer plan. That would be really good. And then we might also be able to dump it all in one ordinance, which would be even awesome. I doubt it, but that might happen. But I think that there needs to be more coordination at the very beginning, like in February or January, so that we can plan these so that they complement each other and complement the businesses, because that's really what, one of the reasons that we want them up.
Okay.
Just an idea.
Comments from any other council members? Councilmember Grace.
Yes. Thank you, President Nisley. I just wanted to say that I actually began receiving comments during last Monday's meeting, some concerns about the number of street closures and a feeling that, that there had been a plan for something different. And I also want to say that I attend Boogie with my kids nearly every year. I love Boogie on the Bricks. It's a really fun, kid-friendly event, and, and I was looking for it, and I kept wondering. Like, I actually had the website open on my computer, just checking, because it was like, you know, watch for the date for this year, so I was wondering what was happening. So I certainly do not want to not have Boogie and not have it be a family fun event. And I know, Member Kotzis, you said, this, this current ordinance avoids intersection closures, but I wonder about, I remember one year when the kids' area was in the section of West State Street, sort of between Court and Dominos, and, because I remember standing there for what seemed like hours as my kids bounced in the bouncy house there. And that's the same section that Brandon mentioned, that then traffic can still turn around at Dominos, but that might be perhaps a compromise that it's, but it would close that intersection at State and Court. So, but that was something that I wondered about, was maybe using that half-block between Court and Dominos for the, for an expansion of the Boogie space.
Okay. Councilmember McGee.
Thank you, President Nisley. I've mentioned earlier that I, I think we're ignoring the area by the college green there. I think that has some great potential. I think it would allow families to enjoy just being on the college green if it's a hot day, if they're there early. I think that whole area could be developed for this kind of festival without imposing the kind of hardships on the merchant side that we're experiencing. And I'm disappointed that nobody seems to want to follow that as a perspective. It worked really well with the International Street Fair. It worked really well with the International Street Fair. And I would just think that, that would be something that some of the promoters could certainly do, especially it would provide, if the weather is going to be bad, and we know in advance the weather is going to be bad, it would provide an opportunity if a university conceded to allowing tents to be pitched at the edge of the college green, perhaps that would even further the possibility of making these festivals better. So, again, I would just toss that out. I see that as an alternative that should be considered rather than going further down to the, the area of Court Street.
Councilmember Crowell.
I appreciate Member McGee's point about East Union. I'm curious if the city administration or organizers have, you know, thought about all the different individual city blocks. I mean, East Union, excuse me, West Union works well for the arts festival, doesn't impact the traditional businesses on Court Street. If, if we were able to move things around a little bit so that it's not the same couple of blocks of Court Street for every festival, then we might, you know, spread out that, the impact. And it might end up encouraging some, in some areas, businesses to be frequented during the, the festival because of the different types of businesses that are in different types of blocks. So I'm just, I'm just saying that Member McGee's point is well taken, and I think we should look at all of the, the different possible blocks that can be used and, and not, I think, always be thinking about Court Street.
Right. And I think all these points are really good. I'm just going to make one, interject with one comment before we proceed. The question tonight here is the ordinance that we're going to close, and I hear the suggestions that it sounds like this is a perfect moment for all of us to begin to engage in future planning with a lot of different organizations. But, so what I'm going to try and focus our discussion tonight now for the remainder of the time is how we settle, how we settle Boogie on the Bricks and this, this ordinance under consideration. Do we have any other comments? I know we have the organizer here. If you'd like to come up and make some comments, we'd welcome.
Absolutely.
Welcome to your additions.
My name is Cory Fletcher, 10360, State Route 682. I am the event coordinator for Boogie on the Bricks. And on behalf of Boogie on the Bricks Board, they asked me to read a brief prepared statement. Purpose of Boogie on the Bricks has always been to promote the Athens area businesses, showcase local and regional artistic talent, and provide a fun, family-friendly, friendly community event that is free, accessible, and open to all. Boogie on the Bricks has been an annual event since 2004 and was created to promote uptown businesses. In 2007, Boogie on the Bricks Incorporated was established as a nonprofit organization in order to continue this mission and help sustain the event. This will be our 15th year of the event. While we fully acknowledge that due to circumstances beyond our control, the planning for this event has come about slightly later than usual, and that fact, as well as the addition and return of new and old events, plays significant limitations on available event dates. While it's not ideal for some individuals and businesses, the August 10th date was chosen after considerable planning and deliberation in regards to what be most beneficial for the community as a whole, as well as the success of the event. This year, instead of an opening celebration for the summer, we'd like to give our community one last hurrah fun at the end before fall returns and normal rhythms of the town reestablish themselves. While we will be grateful for whatever accommodations the city provides for us in regards to throwing this event, and while we will work tirelessly to make this event fun, safe, and successful no matter what, we would like to express our concerns to the members of this assembly that forcing the reduction of the event footprint from two blocks to one will significantly hamper our, our ability to provide many of our traditional services. We will almost certainly have to cancel our acoustic stage, so that's roughly six acts, and is usually the more mellow and family-friendly of the two stages. As a space allotted, cannot successfully sustain two performance venues without significant acoustic overlap. We will also have to cancel our new-to-last-year community education presentation stage, which was very successful, and will have a severely limited vendor and nonprofit space available. Additionally, unless space can potentially be found on private lots or some accommodation reached, there is a strong chance that we have to reduce or eliminate our children's area, which nobody wants. Many local community vendors and businesses benefit directly from Boogie every year, though be negatively impacted by limiting the event space to just one block, from street vendors and artists to local breweries and bars to food trucks and restaurants, and of course, all of our uptown Boogiers. There are many, many people who benefit from this event, both in fun and financially. As the event has evolved over the years, it's grown into much more than a simple street festival, festival with just music and beer, and it seems a shame to reduce it back down to just those essentials just to maintain one intersection for a day. We will have a fun Boogie no matter what, but we ask you please to take these considerations into place for this year and also the years to come. On behalf of myself and the Boogie on the Bricks Board, thank you for your time and thank you for your service in helping us work through these challenges and being part of throwing this uniquely Athens celebration. In times such as these, I think we could all use a little more time to Boogie, and we look forward to seeing you all on the Bricks this year.
Thank you.
Do we have the right to ask questions of this, Joe?
Is it specifically about that?
It is.
Yes, okay.
It's just whether, you're asking us to approve this, and I just wondered, if we did not, would you be able to shift locations?
At this point, it'd be pretty tricky to work that around. If we could get, as Councilmember Grace suggested, like, an extra half-block, we could do a lot with that space in terms of moving further than that and completely retraining the space requested, that would be kind of difficult at this juncture.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we've read, we've read this one for the first time, and we have two more readings. We will be having special sessions. Yes, Mayor Patterson.
I do have a comment. It came from one of the event organizers that was shared with me, and that is the impacts of having two music events back-to-back and the impacts that can have in terms of the acts that you're recruiting or that you're trying to get to come and perform. And so I guess I, I too have a question, if I may, and that is, would, would this be an ongoing thing to have Boogie in August, or is this a one-year one-off because of whatever happened earlier in the year and not being able to get into the, the June time slot? Because I can see June, historically, Boogie has been in June, and really, historically, it was in July. And then it moved to June and was in the June timeframe for many years. And so I'm wondering if this is to continue in the month of August, or is, would this, in future years, go back to the June timeframe?
So as other council members have suggested, I'm totally on board, and the board is as well, and amenable to coordinating with other event organizers and festivals to sort of space out all of our events next year. This doesn't necessarily have to be permanent for us to be in August. It's just with the addition of the Criterion Bike Race this year and some additional organizational issues within our structure, August really seemed to be the only way we had to go. And we tried to pick a date that was not going to bump into too many people and especially not crossing the Brew Week, since that's one of the major festivals and events.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much for all the, the comments and suggestions, and we always learn something. So there's room for discussion next year. And do we have another comment? Brandon, yes, come on up. Any comments?
Brandon Thompson, I'm at 16, even though I realize I never give my address when I speak. I sent an email earlier to the Transportation Committee, and I know they did get a chance to really read it, but I kind of wanted to send this out to the board, because I've been doing street closures for a while, and I'm not exactly clear on this. So when we do street closures, and I'm not necessarily expecting an answer right now, but is the, the council voting, you know, are there other parameters that are written somewhere that, you know, for, to a street closure to be, you know, obviously, safety is something, but is there anything else that is in the city's best interest? But is there something other promoters could find? Because I heard some of the comments that I've heard, and I think they're important and great. Moving, you know, different places is definitely something I've heard several times, you know, Court Street, why always Court Street? One of the reasons is, it's an iconic strip of road. You know, everyone loves Court Street. That's what they want to be. But there are things that could work in other spaces. But that's just something I've been wondering, hearing this, you know, what is it that the council's voting? I know we hear from other citizens, and then we weigh them, but is there any way for us to know what it is that the council's doing, I guess? This is what I'd like to know. You know, is it safety? Is it, is it, you know, is there a metric? You know, and I don't know if different councils do that or not, because this will help us in the future as well for other event planners. Some of the things that happen outside of council that a lot of people don't understand is, we have to meet with the fire chief, the police chief, there's other things that certain strips of Athens don't lend themselves well, you know, electricity, foliage for stages and whatnot. I'm not saying yes or no for Boogie. I'm just saying these are things that, I've been doing this for almost seven years, and I don't necessarily have the answers. And other event promoters are coming later and probably have the same issues, you know. And so I didn't know if that was something we can look to find that, or if that can be created, just so we have that, you know, so we don't have, this issue will happen again if we don't solve it, is what I'm saying. You know, like, this, this is not new, it just, it'll happen. I will get struck by lightning, and there'll be, there won't be a director for Brew Week, and then we'll be coming in in May. You know, what do we do then? I don't want that to happen. So maybe the next person comes in. So that was my main thing, and I don't expect the answer now, but just something for the, the council to think about, because I don't know where that answers, other than speaking with the administration and, and different entities. But if it's, you know, different entities, their opinions change, you know, and I don't think that's good for Athens, if that makes sense.
Sure. So, point well taken. And we hear that, and we can incorporate that into guidelines as we develop them. I mean, it comes through Transportation Committee to give just a partial answer, and I'm sure the administration's also got some comments on it, plus council members, other council members have served as long as I have. But, yeah, so it comes through streets, and, you know, we're looking at, okay, we're going to close the street, so it's a safety issue. And then we're also, and then we're looking at, we're, okay, we're going to suspend some of our rules so that people won't be in violation of the law, so that, the glass and the, excuse me, the noise and the vending and soliciting. And obviously, the safety issue for all of the residents, since it has to go through the police and the fire and making sure it meets all those regulations. But you're right, a written document would help explain to people. And as Chris Fall said, a written document saying, "Apply by February," or "Apply, Apply nine weeks ahead of time." And I realize I'm breaking my own rule, so. Because I said we were only going to talk about the ordinance tonight. But you're right, it was a valid question that's pertinent to this particular one, but probably ought to get out of the discussion. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. So we have two other ordinances, so relating to the vending and the noise. So we'll read through those, so they're read for the first time also. 6719 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the uptown area on Saturday, August 10th and until 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, August 11th, 2019, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Nisley, thank you. Once again, the parallel ordinance to, to allow Boogie on the Bricks to happen on August 10th in a manner that wouldn't have to be quiet.
6819 is the next ordinance for this, and it's an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on Saturday, August 10th and until 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, August 11th, 2019, during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music and Arts Festival, introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Nisley, thank you. And this is just suspension of our, our vending ordinance on that Saturday, August 10th, to accommodate Boogie on the Bricks.
Okay. And we'll move on to a one-reading resolution, R. 519, a resolution strongly urging Ohio Governor Dewine and members of the Ohio General Assembly to support the restoration of the local government fund to pre-recession levels, as detailed in Sub- bill, Sub- Substitute House Bill 166, the state operating budget, introduced by all members of council. And just by way of background, I believe Mayor Patterson was the one that mentioned this last week, that the Ohio Municipal League is urging municipalities across the state to let the legislature know how important these local government funds are. And Auditor Hecht has talked to us many times before about what our funding was and what it is now. It's actually, historically, something that's been around since 1934 in the state, designating funds to, directly to municipalities. And in 2018, City Council did pass a resolution, also talking about how important the, when there was a state budget surplus in the last biennium, and couldn't some of that surplus money be returned in the form of local government funds to council. At one time, back in 2005, we were at $812,000 that we received per year in these local government funds from the state. And this year, we are now down to, in 2018, down to $373,000. So quite, quite a depletion of those funds that helps us with our, our infrastructure. So once again, making the case of how important that is for us to keep the community safe and in good repair. Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, and I appreciate everyone's work that went into this. And I might rely on Auditor Hecht as a friendly reminder on this. I also, if memory serves me correctly, university towns also received an impact fee from the state, and that too has been diminished and belittled over the years. And that's thousands of dollars of money as well. Am I correct?
That has actually been stopped. We didn't get a payment last year, and I emailed early this year to see if it was just late, and it's not in there anymore. So yes, we, we lost our impacted funds money on top of these local government funds. And, but the local government funds, you know, are kind of similar. This money goes into our general fund, and that's what supports our police and fire, our administration, our code department. And that's where we're really losing our money from the state. And it's really hard to provide all those services when, you know, we're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars. We also lost, probably six years ago or so, they phased out the estate taxes, and we were getting almost $300,000 a year from that. So it's, it's just piling up. There's been a lot, one thing after another.
Thank you, Auditor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fall.
I appreciate this. I agree with my, on my preemptive sort of thing. Having ability to have money that really should be staying with us, because it's not like they're just making money, it's money that we send up to Columbus that we're not getting back. And a lot of times, it's being used for such things as tax cuts and stuff for people who don't necessarily need it. If we do not have money, we don't, we cannot fulfill our home rule authority in the city. And the home rule authority is in the Ohio Constitution that says that we have the right to make decisions, to make laws, and to spend our money the way that our home rule and our citizens instruct us. And right now, we can't, we can't do that because they're preempting laws right and left. And then if we don't have money, we can't do things. We can't have nice things, like an extra fireperson or something. And then it's getting to the point where our city is going towards being, it's the race to the bottom. And if we can't have money to spend for our citizens, then it's just even further race to the bottom. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McGee.
This is probably a question for Ms. Hecht. My view of having watched this over a number of years is that the money that is being returned to the city is shrinking for the sources, that would be the general funds. But I note that we're still receiving a sizable amount of money for projects, such as the next reading will be a project where the city will receive $1,800,000 from the Small Cities ODOT fund. And I, my question to you is, do you have any idea whether the money that we're receiving from that particular area is increasing or decreasing, from ODOT in particular, highway funding, anything like that?
I don't know off the top of my head. Part of, you know, I could say it's increasing, but not necessarily because the state is throwing more money at us. It might be more because of the projects that the city has been able to come up with the last, you know, five, six, eight years or more have increased with our ability to apply for these grants, to come up with appropriate projects that they will fund. And that, I think, has a lot to do with it, actually. We have good people, you know, writing these grants. And I think that's a lot of it. It's something I can look at, if you just want numbers, I can certainly do that, just to give us an idea. There are some grants like that that we don't really get much anymore, like the ARC grants, but it, it just depends, I guess, whether that department has money available and if we can come up with the best criteria to get that money.
And part of it is back to the discussion on the Ohio fuel tax and the increase in that. that, because for years, the Ohio Department of Transportation was funding projects all over the state, but they were doing it at a deficit, hundreds of millions of dollars of deficit. And so they knew that they, both the legislature and the governor, knew that they had to, to continue funding those programs, increase that fuel tax too. So, good points. Yes, Mayor Patterson.
I can certainly along with the auditor, I can look into a lot of the Ohio Department of Transportation funding, because that fluctuates up and down depending on what funding mechanism we're talking about. Not all of them are showing increases, some are flat, some others have seen, we've seen some reductions, depending on what the mechanism is. But, you know, one of the things I want to share with councils that you're aware, one of the reasons we are as successful as we are when it comes to small cities, TAP grants, and other vending mechanisms under ODOT, as well as OPWC, is that we deliver, we've been very successful in getting our projects to come through completion. And my conversations with Fred Vogel, who's our representative for District 10, he's said that. He said that you guys, you do well, and that they look to us to be able to, have the wherewithal to come through to completion with various projects. So that's important to keep in mind. The other thing, since gas tax was mentioned with the increase, and that will be money used in specific ways as they come into the city, something I really want council to keep in mind with this resolution in front of you, is to not see kind of a bait and switch, that, oh, your money's going up in this bucket and therefore, small cities' funding can either stay the same or possibly be reduced further. I don't have any intel on that, quite honestly. However, this resolution I find vitally important, especially when you look at the number that's in this resolution of $438,941, which has been the reduction over the course of, I believe, the past 10 years, of watching that number go down.
Council Member Reisner, did you have a comment?
No, I just wanted to point out, there's a, there's a difference between the general revenue funds, which is a, is a stream of funds that you can count on. It's, well, since 1934, it was there, and we were going to, you could count on it, you could budget for it, you could actually put that in your projections for revenue for the next year and say, well, you know, based upon what we've got in the past, next year we're going to get probably this much, we can count on that, and we can plan to do this, this. We can hire that new person to take care of trash on the streets, or we can maybe look at, well, the employees haven't had a raise in three years, maybe we can do that. We could make projections. But when we're dealing with grant money, it's a, it's a coin flip. You don't know if you're going to get it or not. If you don't apply for the grant, you don't get it. If they don't have a project that's going to meet their standards, you're not going to get it. And on, and on top of that, if some other city has more points than you have for the grant, you don't get it. So you can't possibly even begin to build a budget around a big maybe like that. It's nice when you get it, and then we can do something with it, but you have to get it first, and there's no guarantee it's going to come. So I think that's something that we've got to keep in mind here, is that, you know, grants are great, but you can't count on them. And something like the local government fund, once upon a time, we could. Well, hell, it's our money, we should get it back.
Okay. Any other comments?
Excuse my French.
Council Member Grace.
I, I was sitting here thinking very much the same things as Council Member Reisner. I applaud our city administration and those who have worked so hard to get the wonderful grant funding that we have, because it's, it's enabled us to, to do some wonderful projects and improve our roads, improve our infrastructure, and it's absolutely necessary. But it is entirely different than general revenue funds that we use to pay our employees and, you know, like, do important things, like keep the lights on and the roads that have been built, maintained, and, and provide for public safety. So while the, the grants are wonderful, they're very, they're project-specific, and you have to have a project that meets the criteria that, that someone else has decided on and that, that restricts what we are able to do with, with the funding. So they're, they're both important, but for very different reasons.
So we do have this one-reading resolution and a lot of good comments. We need a motion to approve.
I'm moving.
Okay. Just realized that, okay.
Would you like to read it?
We have a motion and second for approval, and Mayor Patterson has one more comment.
Obviously, it would be important for the viewing audience to hear, as well as the audience who's here, to hear the resolution in its entirety.
Entirety. This is a resolution strongly urging Ohio Governor Dewine and members of the Ohio General Assembly to support the restoration of the local government fund to pre-recession levels in Substitute House Bills 166, the state operating budget. Whereas the local government fund was reduced in 2011 by 50% during the Kasich administration from 3.68% of general, general revenue funds to its current level of 1.66% of general revenue funds. And whereas past Ohio General Assemblies have repeatedly decreased funding and revenue sharing in recent years, in addition to significantly reducing the local government fund, including eliminating the estate tax and phasing out the tangible personal property tax. And whereas these resident reductions have resulted in a loss of revenue in the city of Athens of $438,941. And whereas a sudden revenue losses made it increasingly difficult to provide basic services, rebuild infrastructure, and bolster public safety services to fight the opioid epidemic. And whereas when municipalities experience success in fostering safe communities, building sound infrastructure, and increasing economic development, the state of Ohio reaps the benefits as well. And whereas reinvestment of the local government fund would aid the state in its goal of lowering taxes on the individual by enabling municipalities to decrease the local tax burden. Now therefore be it resolved that Athens City Council hereby urges the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels, ensuring that local communities are able to provide crucial services and improvement to infrastructure and public safety. Further, Athens City Council hereby declares its opposition to any further cuts into the local government fund or the future diversion of revenues from the local government fund. And then we will send this to Senator Frank Hoagland and Representative Jay Edwards and the Ohio Municipal League. How about Governor Dewine? We could consider a friendly amendment to add Governor Dewine. Okay. Good point.
Because we're strongly urging Governor Dewine on the first line.
Right. We should, we should make.
Give him a mommy shoe.
Charlie, we're out.
I guess we can, we can call him up. We can read it.
I think we could probably, we could probably add him in, yes, thank you, since he's addressed in the first sentence. Okay. All right, so we have a motion and second for approval of the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The resolution unanimously passes. Thank you, colleagues. We now have, under Other Business, a motion to remove Ordinance 1819 from the table and amend. So Ordinance 1819, and Ordinance amending Ordinance 8418 to increase the appropriation and expenditure for construction and construction engineering services for the Richland Avenue Pedestrian Passageway Project, Number 311, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Council Member Katsas.
Thank you, President Nisley. I would like to make a motion to remove Ordinance 01819 from the table.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion to remove this from the table. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. The motion, the ordinance has now been removed from the table.
Thank you. President Nisley, I would like to make a motion to amend Ordinance 01819.
Second. Second, okay.
Okay.
All right. And we have a motion and a second for amending this ordinance, and...
Can I read the details, please?
Yes, if you could read the details on that, yes.
And so, so this ordinance, we are striking a whereas, which that whereas was due to a short construction window to avoid, to avoid Ohio University graduation and to deliver the project to meet ODOT's September 30th, 2019 deadline. So that is now gone. Section 1 will also change. The 2019 appropriation ordinance is hereby amended to appropriate, from the unappropriated balance, an additional sum of, and then this is, this has struck this number, $429,865, and that will be now changed to $150,000. And that is to Street Rehabilitation Fund 572 TC 500.
Okay, we have a motion and second on this.
And then I do have one more section to amend. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, no.
And I just went too fast there, okay. And then there's Section 3, the Safety Service Director is further authorized to expend up to, and then this number, which is going to be struck, $3,495,129, that will now be changed to $3,645,129. And then a final, and, let's see, the final strike is one more dollar amount, which is $1,592,934, and that will now change to $1,742,934. And that is, that is coming from the Street Rehabilitation Fund 572 TC 500.
Okay.
I am done with the amendment.
Okay. So these are the amendments as described by Service Safety Director and yourself last week, and what we're doing is, this is because of the additional $150,000 that came, when the bid came in, the expenses for that and appropriating it. Okay. So we have now a motion and second to amend. Are there any other comments or questions on this motion to amend? Yes, Council Member Butler.
I would just like to express my support for this project. It's been one that's been discussed thoroughly. Our City Service Safety Director and our Public Works Director have shared with us extensively about this project. I believe, if I recall correctly too, and the mayor can remind me, I think we were informed last week as well too, that the university, there's been a request to the university to help bump up a little bit of the, the price on this as well. Am I correct in remembering that? Thank you. So again, I'd like to express my support for this project. I, I think as well too, that it enhances safety in the area, which is much needed and beneficial. Thank you.
Yes, Council Member Grace.
I also am very much in support of this project. I have spent a lot of time in this area of the city, and we even had a student do her semester project on the potential health impact to people in, in the area of this project. And I, I truly believe it will make a significant difference in pedestrian and car and bicycle traffic flow through the area, and it's something that's been needed for a very long time. And once again, we are fortunate to have received a very substantial grant from some funding, that, that it's not all coming out of local dollars. And I, I think this will be something that will improve that portion of the city and university for a very long time, and I, I think it's worth doing.
Okay. Yeah, Council Member McGee.
Oh, this must be my last opportunity to speak out on this issue, and I, I understand we have the amendment first, is...
We do have the amendment to vote on.
And then are we considering the ordinance itself after the amendment?
Well, it'll be read for the first time, and we do need to know as we are going to consider for approval.
Read the first time?
You'll, you'll have time after this.
You're going to have time.
I have more time.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I will hold my peace for the future.
It's going to be adopted.
It will be adopted tonight.
Oh, in that case. Oh, almost got by me. Everyone knows I've opposed this from the very start, and I, I do so tonight for certain reasons, but I'd also like to, to make sure that I understand how much the university is contributing to this project. And I also will admit this, I am torn on this project somewhat as it's gone along. The way I see it, this is a classic example of big government coming in and saying, basically, we have some money for you to do this. And I understand what the mayor has said about, if you do these grants and you complete them successfully, you can get some better grants. We have some other grants coming up, of course, on Stimson Avenue, for instance. So it's important that we act, we actually complete some of the grants, and I, I understand this. On this particular thing though, I, in my mind, this is a boondoggle. I've watched, I've asked that we consider some alternatives to this. No alternatives, I believe, have been considered. I know the mayor has indicated on several occasions, he talked to the university president, and I don't know when this thing is going to be actually completed, but if it actually is something that affects the safety of people, then I, I think it's important that something be instituted to protect them now and not wait until two years when this is over. However, I see a lot of other contradictions too. I, I was walking down Richland Avenue one day, and there was a terrible traffic jam, and I could see how people would think, oh, that's caused by those students, you know, crossing the street or something like that. It was caused by the roundabout, because there was an accident in the roundabout. And I just wonder how often we have this still kind of problem with the roundabout, and people are, are, because they can't see what is happening, they're figuring that it must be because the students are holding up traffic. And as you know, in the summertime, the students are not holding up traffic, in the wintertime, they're not holding up traffic. When they do hold up traffic for their few minutes of crossing over between the hours, five, 10 minutes, it could easily be remedied by some other options. So again, I'm torn by the fact that, you know, I'd like to see a nice project done, I'd like to see a nice tunnel done, but then I also see that the city is out over a million dollars, and I'm not sure of the exact sum, might take on this is, we're appropriating from the general fund into the transportation fund, is my understanding. We're putting $150,000 more tonight into this through the amendment, but the total that the city is putting in is about, between a million and a million five, is my understanding. So I have some concerns that the public needs to be aware of this. This is what we're doing. We've made the decision that we'll go forward with this project, but it does concern me because I think Ms. Fall had indicated that we sometimes don't have nice things. Well, you sometimes have to save your money to use it for the nice things, is my attitude in life, and, and I think what is happening in this instance, again, it'll be a nice tunnel or whatever you want to call it, it will be nice. And as Ms. Grace had indicated, students will get to hang out there. Why anybody would want to hang out by, by this, I don't know, but, but I am concerned about this particular trend. And I think other people in the audience are concerned with it, even though, even though we realize that this money cannot be used to pay off the, the increased trash costs. I mean, I'm glad somebody pointed that out. And it can't be used to, to pay the cost, the revenue costs, like water bills increasing. Nobody wants to imply that it can be used for that. But it can be used for some other things that I think the city could use either now or in the future, and that's something I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Okay, so if I have the process right, we're voting on the amendment now, and then we'll vote to suspend, and then we'll vote to approve. So we have a few more votes to go through.
A little bit more discussion, and we do have...
And yes, Auditor Hecht, yes, and we will, I'm not going to cut off discussion yet.
Okay, no.
I just want to clarify, and I may have misunderstood what you said. None of the money for this project is coming out of the general fund. It's coming out of our Street Rehab Fund, which is a tax levy that we have on the ballot, which is strictly for use for street rehabilitation. And then a large part of this is coming from a small cities' grant from ODOT, the 1.8 million. The rest of the money is coming out of Street Rehab. Some, there's about $90,000 coming out of the sewer fund, because when they start working down there, they'll have to do some work on the sewer system. But none of it's coming out of the general fund, because there's no extra money in the general fund that's put in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So any other comments from council members first, and then I'll go to administration and see if the audience has any comments.
Are we going to talk about comments after the amendment?
We can talk about comments after we amend it, when you have a motion to, to approve. Okay. And did you want to make anything about the amendment?
All those that comes up for...
Okay. So right now, we're voting on the amendment. We have a motion and second for that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion, or the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time, and now...
President Nisley, I would like to take this time to suspend the rules for Ordinance 01819.
Second.
And this is because... And this is because in order to secure the contracts, time is of the essence.
And that ODOT, we have to respond by, the commitment to them by June?
June 10th.
June 10th, noon. Okay. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Rules have been suspended, Councilmember Cottis.
Okay. President Nisley, at this moment, I would like to take, I would like to make a motion to adopt 01819.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval.
And let me actually provide, I did have a conversation with our engineer late this afternoon, just to wrap my head around some dollars for the last time. And so the city share currently right now is $1.4 million on a $3.3 million project. That does not take into consideration any additional funds coming from OU, which we, you know, we don't have an exact total at this point. They're going to the Board of Trustees to discuss this, and please, mayor, correct me if I start to speak wrong, but they've already done $400,000 to this project. They only go to the trustees when the figure hits $500,000. Read into that what you want. Additionally, at this point on Friday, the Engineering Department applied for a Transportation Improvement District Fund, or a grant, to the tune of $250,000. Now, of course, we just had this discussion about grants. We don't know if this will come through, but this is an additional $250,000. So, correct, we are at $1.4 million right now of city funds to do this project, but there could be $350,000 that's still out there that will bring that total down. The project itself will start March 1st, 2020, and run through September 11th, 2020. And so that is, we have a winning bid from a company out of Mansfield, Ohio, and that is the project in itself. Now, I'll also mention two other things. One is, I mentioned before, Richland Avenue is one of the four major streets that comes into the city. So historically, it was old US 50 that came up through the center of town and straight down Court Street. Right now, it is, that intersection is probably, I think you could argue that it is the most failing intersection that we have in the city of Athens because of the fact that when you look at Ohio Revised Code, and, you know, I know we don't like the state telling us what to do, but when it comes to traffic laws, I do like to see all of our laws be the same across the region. And so when you go to Columbus, you can behave the same way in a street, whether you're on foot or in a vehicle. All of those rules are laid out by ORC. A pedestrian that puts a foot into a crosswalk has the right of way. So basically, right now, when people say that the students aren't, or anybody, any pedestrian that is walking through that intersection is not paying attention or is not doing what they're supposed to be doing, actually, they are. They have the right of way. And so what we are trying to do here is we're trying to correct an issue where we have vehicular traffic that backs up to the tune of, you know, 15 minutes. I've sat there at some of the busiest times, and it will go on. It doesn't just happen during the course of changing that 10 minutes when classes are changing. It actually spreads out, you know, 20, half an hour through that period. So I've watched it, I've watched it fail. This seems like it's the best way to allow that vehicular traffic on a major street to traverse there, and it also adds a new element of safety for the pedestrians that are trying to get across that intersection.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fall.
I'd like to just talk briefly about, this project hasn't just come from Adam's Room or someplace. These processes and these projects go through a long planning period, and, okay, it didn't work. The planning period includes multiple stakeholder meetings, public forums, design meetings, and those sort of things. So it is that there's been a lot of public participation. I think sometimes the city does a lot of really good public participation planning, but it's like way back when, before the whole process, because these projects are so long. And then people seem like, whoa, I didn't know about that, or I forgot about that. So this is an opportunity to remind people about all the planning that went forward, and to remind people some of the things that we're talking about today are not going to be done until 2020, some of the projects that we've been talking about. So it's not like half-dash or any of those sort of things. This is a process that we do follow, and every grant process also has their requirements for public participation.
Good point. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Mayor Patterson.
Just some clarity to the Transportation Improvement District Grant. That funding mechanism, that is specific to economic development, and when you look at the half-mile and full-mile radius, or around a radius for that project unto itself, when you look at the number of jobs and the number of businesses in that area, it's large. It's very large. And so when we were going through the process of evaluating this, which is the Transportation Improvement District Board, of which I sit on that along with the county engineer, one of the township trustees, one of the county commissioners, as well as someone from another municipality, and we were sitting in there, and we also had, again, Fred Vogel from District 10 on the phone, and he was saying, encouraging us to use the Richland Avenue Pedestrian Passageway as something, because there was actually two projects that were on that list that were being discussed that day during the meeting. One was the Stimson Avenue Corridor Project, and the other was the Richland Avenue Pedestrian Passageway. Andrew, or Bob Hedy, Engineer, Director for Engineering Public Works, as well as Jessica Dine, with my encouragement, actually applied for both. So again, making sure that we're not leaving money on the table with possible projects to seek an additional $250,000 to go toward both of those projects separately. But with the Richland Avenue in particular, with that increase in 150, if we're successful, it'll actually be to negative, it'll be to our benefit because it'll actually decrease our funding by 100,000 using that funding mechanism. But again, it's whether we're successful or not. With strong encouragement, we went ahead and did it.
Okay. And any comments? Yes, from the audience. If you could give us your name and address, and if you represent an organization.
I am. Chris Monday, 9 Yarfield Avenue. Overtime, especially within the last week, I had a chat with Patterson and tonight, what you guys are saying here. I have been convinced of the validity of this project, and, you know, like I said last week, it's one that seemed interesting and maybe not such a priority, but, you know, I see all of your points. And I also see that it is not necessarily strictly a safety issue, but that is a big aspect of this. And I agree with Councilmember McGee that, in the meantime, because of the safety aspect, that it seems like there should be some measures taken towards that, maybe like a few speed bumps in front of there. Because I see, like Columbia Avenue, which I live near, was smoothed over. It's really nice to drive on, but then there was speed bumps put in there to slow us back down, which I thought was kind of funny. But I love that street. It's a beautiful thing. And then there was someone who was hit on Court Street this past week, which of course, I jokingly wondered if there was going to be a tunnel put under Court Street. But then I found out just tonight before I came here that she was given a jaywalking ticket, I guess rightfully so, but perhaps for some extra funds at night when most of us are asleep while students are walking across the street and banging on people's cars, which happens to me sometimes. That could be a big source of revenue that hopefully would end, given that maybe they would eventually learn to stop jaywalking across the streets. That's about all, I guess. I just wanted to say that, you know, a few minor safety measures could be taken in the meantime until then, and thank you for my time. I'm going to leave right now because I'm late to something. I appreciate being able to talk, and...
Thank you. Thank you for the comments.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yes. Mr. Fletcher.
My name is Michael Fletcher, 7716 Lee Raster Road, which is Athens Township. I don't live in the city, but I've been following this casually as you've been going through the process, and I just want to add, build a little bit on what Councilman McKee said. I don't want to cast doubt upon what my, or suggest that I have a negative opinion about what you're doing in this project. But I will express that an awful lot of people in the city and in the region, though you may have had a long process to get here, most people in the community are not aware of that process or what was said in that process. And an awful lot of people in the region in particular are going to look at this and seriously question what logic you used to think that it was wiser to elevate a road rather than to elevate the pedestrians, because it would cost a great deal more to elevate a road. This is, and I'm not asking for you to answer that now, but I'm suggesting that this is an opportunity for you to significantly increase the way you communicate to the community how and why you chose this path rather than the alternative of elevating the pedestrians, as you might have seen in many cases around Ohio State, up in Columbus, for instance. That's all I want to say.
Thanks for the comments. Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of Ordinance 1819. So we'll do the vote now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay. We have 6-4, 1 against, and the motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. And next week, we'll be having committee meetings, several, I imagine. And if people do have agenda items, please get them to Council Clerk Debbie Walker as soon as possible so we can get the agenda out. And then we do have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on the agenda tonight already. Oh, I should ask one more thing before we go to that. Are there any other announcements? I'm sorry. And is there anyone from the audience then that wants to speak on another topic? Okay. If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We adjourn at 8:44. Thank you very much. Good night.